Paula disappeared.
I'm here.
Okay, I'm glad you're here, Paula.
Thank you, Lynn.
Folks, it's seven o'clock. But we do not have a quorum, but I, I think we could probably start without a quorum because we're not acting on anything. We're not voting on anything. We have Paula online. Oh, yeah, we do have a quorum. Yeah, I forgot because Paula's not here. Okay, we have a quorum. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. And the first item is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment, either online or in person here? Seeing none. The reason, the sole reason for this meeting tonight is to have our first budget workshop. Each year, we have two budget workshops where we can, the first workshop is we hear the presentation on the proposed budget by the Acting Superintendent, the recommended budget by, from Neil Weathers and his team. And then we have time to discuss it and give some feedback. And then we have another budget workshop scheduled in, what's the date for the next one?
March 5th.
March 5th. And then we have to finalize our budget either on March 5th or at another time between then and March 12th or 13th, because then it has to be printed up, the final budget, and handed over to the Board of Finance by March 15th. So we have another board member that's joined us online, De'Neece Torres is with us. So we're just going to start out by hearing from, are you going to be presenting it to us now? Neil is going to present the budget to us. And do you want us to hold while you're doing the presentation and ask questions at the end?
I'm going to start. I think probably questions at the end is best, but if, if a lot of information does go in, the board chair decides, or anyone really needs to ask a question, I'm okay with that.
Okay, okay. And I'm going to take a point of personal privilege before we get into the budget to recognize that we have Grace Martinez here with us tonight. It will be her last meeting here with us before she moves on to her new job in Bloomfield. We're very happy for you, Grace, but also very sad and a little mad that you're leaving. But we wish you the best and we want to thank you for all your wonderful work here with Wyndham Public Schools. And sitting next to Grace is Kim Beck, who will be our Acting Interim HR Person until the new superintendent, a new superintendent is hired and can select the full-time permanent candidate for that cabinet position. It's a very important position, and we couldn't leave it unfilled as we talked about at our last board meeting after Grace left. So we're very happy to have you here with us tonight. Welcome. And De'Neece and Paula will get a chance to meet you in person at the next meeting, I'm sure. So now I'm going to hand it over to you, Neil.
Good evening. So tonight, I come before you to present the Acting Superintendent's Recommended Budget. So let's jump right in. So before I get into the budget development process and what we've done so far, the purpose of this meeting and this presentation is to provide you with as much information that supplements and complements the information that the team has put in, put together in the budget book that you have in front of you, that we, you received, I believe, last week, last Wednesday. So we will go through this, but the idea is to provide you as much information and then hear your feedback, questions and comments, so that before the next budget workshop, if we can't answer you now, we can work on providing you that information to help facilitate your discussion about what you recommend moving forward to the Board of Finance. So thank you, and thank you for this opportunity to present this to you. So just starting off, so far, we've done quite a bit to get us to where we are. We have met with our building and department leaders. Early on, we identified a budget gap due to reduced grant revenue sources. I will explain a little bit more later in the presentation. We, in our discussions with building and department leaders, the general sense is schools still rely on the additional staff that was covered by ESAR funds that no longer exist. Just, that's an important point to make. We reviewed budget lines, encumbrances, and projected spending in all the departments. We analyzed class sizes and caseloads across the district. We analyzed staffing structures for all of our specialized programs. And we analyzed purchase orders for each department and school. The recommended budget cuts that I'll speak about later, staffing and otherwise, the idea is we, we did them with the idea to impact, limit impact to our students and our staff or employees. That was our mindset all along, and you'll hear me mention that a couple more times. The projected 25, 26 budget needs are based on what we know now. As all of you know, the timeline of a budget process, and then some of our sources and information don't always calibrate in a nice, pretty wrap-up with a bow. So we sometimes find things after this presentation, and we just want to know that this is based on what we know now, and we don't want to make wild estimates of things we don't know because that doesn't, well, work out well, in my opinion. So moving on, just some budget book notes for everybody. This first point, we've actually had in a couple of the last presentations that I looked at, but the executive summary, while the number can go to 14, really lists 13 categories. That's because since 22, 23, the textbook library books and other supplies have been combined into one category, just of note. The staffing changes due to Wyndham Center closing and Grade 5 moving to Wyndham Middle School is reflected in the book on pages 55 to 59, as well as 71 to 73. And the staffing and budget book for Wyndham Middle School is currently for grades 5 to 8 combined. Staffing details of grades 5 and 6 and grade 7 and 8 will be worked out in the spring because some of that will involve some shared staff. We weren't prepared to break those details out, but we could tell you all the staff that will reside in that building. We are comfortable doing that and have done so in our presentation and in the budget book. For the Board of Finance presentation, or potentially sooner, the following we will share. We've done this in other Board of Finance or Board Budget Books recommended by the Board. School and central office annual projected expenses. One of the reasons we try not to do this now, if you change the, the ask based on your conversations, to, that together takes a few hours of work. So if we kept doing that and changing it, I feel like our, our finance team could be using their time more wisely on others, other priorities, like trying to get our ask down versus just keep changing that. So, so I think that that's prudent to do that as we get closer to the end. We can also provide current spending against, requested with budget change. For example, our current spending, we do this a lot of times in our just finance and audit meetings where we are, and like, are any projections falling under and could we make adjustments with some, with some data and rationale? And then finally, we'll give you some projected cost per pupil in each school. But again, we would like to do that when we get closer to where we, we feel the numbers closer and grasp what's going to be recommended. So in our budget history, I've gone, well, actually 10 years out and including this year, you can see the amounts. In the middle, the first column is simply our fiscal years, always the end of the year, right? Like we're in 24, 25 is fiscal year 2025. We're currently enjoying an approved 3.585% budget, and the budget totals are in the third column with what we were, our general budget increase in the middle represented what the referendum, the town voted on by referendum. We had a special note because there was conversations during the 2024 fiscal year budget that the original request was closer over 3.7, but there were some conversations with how we can negotiate that to lower our asks, 2.575. Our current ask, and we'll talk about this, is 6.41, and I will get into the reasons why in the next few slides. So the cost drivers and considerations, I have about three slides to get into this. One of the things to consider that was a challenge for our team in trying to lower our ask was our grant revenue decrease projected of over $2 million less than it was last year. So 2 per, $2 million is roughly 4% of our budget. If you subtract 4% from our budget, you could see that the ask would be much different, but that was obviously a barrier to navigate. We had a reduction of excess cost grant reimbursement rate from 71% to 64%. Again, this is one of many times you'll hear me say, this is after our last budget had passed and we found out mid-year. You, that will become a recurring story. We currently in this budget book have a net reduction of 12.8 positions. I think it's like 12.9 something, like what I, I spared you the .03 hundredths of a position and went with 12.8 and from the previous budget. And I'll talk about those reductions later. Increases to certified salaries and non-certified salaries is simply, well, it's a combination of things. It's due to the loss of ESAR. We enjoy the remaining bits of ESAR till September. By using that money for certain things, it allowed us to put money to salary. Our alliance shortfall, as you know, of $536,000. Again, we found out about that after the school year started. And our projected contractual increases, which are listed, I believe, on pages 45 and 47. There's reasons, or I think 47 has the contractual increases. All of that combined leads to the amount that we're, we're putting in our categories. And then we have an increased benefits. This is due to projected insurance cost increases. A matter of fact, when we did this last time, I think we're operating around a 9% increase. And we also have a loss because we were able to apply some carryover from the previous year. That's why it looks closer to $2 million in the bucket. We didn't have that carryover this year. Next slide, please. The closing of Wyndham Center impacts staffing and operations. We were able to make some reductions and savings in places where we could. Another thing that occurred as of January 2025, again, after our budget was set, minimum wage increased from 1569 an hour to 1635. That was a 4.2% increase that, you know, has impact on our, our salary lines. We had increased special ed, increased special education needs and costs, primarily staffing, with at least 25 students new to specialized programs after 2024, 2025 budget was passed. And I just want to spend a quick second on this one. Basically, after the year started, if we receive students with IEPs or students that require specialized programs based on those IEPs, and we determine that when they arrive in our district, sometimes adding a student doesn't mean they're just entered into a program. It could require additional staffing, and that, in fact, has happened. And we had 25 students to these specialized programs. And then, and in generality, without not talking specific students, bless you, those could be out placements. Those could be like our autism program rise that could be our stride, and, and those are the biggies or are medically fragile, for example. Those are some examples. Then another big driver is inflation. There's, always continues to be increases in operational costs in HVAC, utilities, supplies and services. The expansion of operational space brought about by the renovation of Wyndham High School. It's a, it's a very large building that supports central office, NECC, and the high school, this beautiful, beautiful space that we're in, but it also has central air and that, you know, using all of that space does come with cost. There are increases in liability insurance. Now, while it's about $60,000, that's not like a significant dent in the overall budget. It's a 14% increase, and that is something that is beyond our control. The increase in transportation, which is an 8.2% increase. There's a reason for this. We have our contractual increases, which are not 8.2%, but East Con had a transportation rate hike that occurred for our specialized transportation. And a shocking development, you've heard me say this, this happened after our budget was passed last year. This was a mid-year, so we're dealing with it now and later. And we are having a significant increase in homeless transportation costs. This is connected to the Kinnevento law where students hypothetically, I'll just give a scenario, could be their nexus is Wyndham, they are displaced out of Wyndham, and we need to provide transportation, which we do so gladly, but that comes with cost. And then the last point of the drivers and considerations is that post-pandemic expenditures for staff absences continue to increase. Even though we're out of COVID, our, our staff absences, and I don't say this judgmentally, I say it descriptively, continue to be high. And, and when we have that, we need to fill them with qualified individuals that can cover the classrooms to teach our children. And those costs are just continuing to increase. I think this is not a Wyndham problem, but can use to be a state and national problem. And those are the main drivers.
Neil, I would, can I interject here? The observation that I have, looking at this list, is that this is not, much of this is not just happening in Wyndham. It's happening across the state and across the nation, a lot of the cost drivers.
To your point, one of the things that we hope to do in a, a future presentation as we move along is the asks of other districts across the state are actually pretty close to where we're asking. And then actually, some of our Dergi counterparts are actually asking for much higher than what we're asking because, and when you look at their superintendent reports and presentations that are public, so far, they're saying the same things. Like, like, obviously, I drafted this from our team, but it was almost like we all copied each other in some of the bullet points. But we, I promise you.
Same dynamics are, you know, the same trends are happening with a lot of these things. Some of the other districts that I've read about aren't, are in worse shape because they didn't manage as well anticipating and the use of the ESAR funds and, and anticipating things the way Rita has done for us here in Wyndham.
Yeah, we're, we're very fortunate for our, our finance director because we've really navigated this. And while this, no, we had a sugar coat, this is like a tough budget as we present a 6.41, but we could be doing a lot worse if we hadn't had some foresight years out and like years in the making. So the, that's the reason why right now, while we're pursuing our avenues at the Board of Finance, but we haven't run out of money, even though we were, you know, had the shortfall of a half million dollars, which is a percent of our budget. That, that would have impacted other districts potentially differently than it impacted us because we're, once we realize it, we make adjustments and try to be fiscally responsible to keep things going that need to be going.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions at this point? Okay. You know, take a sip of water if you need it.
I'm good. I have a cough drop.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. So on the budget book, this is just the important five pages, I think, or like from page 45 to 50, is like kind of the crux overview of our district budget ask. On page 45, you have the executive summary, which is the big buckets, we call them, and those are the major categories. And then after that, and it also shows a comparison between last year and this year. And then on page 46, we have assumptions that Rita always does. And what we tried to do in our assumptions, three points I want to make, is that we tried to optimize carryover for Medicaid and IDAB carryover and Title I carryover as much as we can. We had the ever-source incentives, I think of 292 or 296, it can't, like close to 300,000, and the staff benefit reduction projected based on staff reductions. We did something like that last year. I think actually in our finance and audit discussion, we, we didn't mention it, but those numbers existed and they weren't on the chart, so we added them tonight or in the budget book, just to make you aware. And then finally, the cost centers, which have a more detailed description of some of the influencers of what's driving those particular areas. So I'll just speak to the executive summary for a minute. And for folks at home, I apologize, but it's a hard chart to, to fit into one slide. This really represents the cost centers, which lead us to a 6.41% increase over the 24, 25 budget. This is located on page 45 and represents, as we call them, the big buckets. Employees salaries and benefits total, as you can see, over 39, close to 40 million dollars, and actually represent 71.5% of the budget we're asking. Last year, that was about 69%, just to give you a comparison. And then one thing that's really noted, like, and something we'll have to work on as we pitched this to the Board of Finance, Rita explained this, and I thought she did very well in explaining it at the finance and audit meeting. If I do a bad job, we'll call her up to do this better. But the increase in equipment, bucket 13, is primarily due to accounting standard change. To move software purchases, any software purchase over $5,000 has, was moved from contracted services or other purchase services and now has to reside in equipment. So you could see those two categories had significant deductions or reductions while that equipment line went, like, had a significant increase. That, that is the major reason. And actually, one point I made at the finance and audit discussion recently was that if you take lines, the first three lines, 1, 2, and 3, that actual increase almost represents our entire budget ask. And if you take budget lines all the way down from 4 to 13, it also, actually, it is almost net neutral. And, and so just keeping that in mind for context. Does anyone have questions on that?
I don't see any.
Thank you. All right. So here is the assumptions we were talking about. This budget assumes the following carryovers are being applied and that we're getting level funding for all grants, knowing when we say level funding, that the alliance grant for next year is going to be the 536K less than we thought it was going to be when it was projected a year prior. I've already mentioned a couple of these. The 3% certified attrition is something we did again. This is something we tried last year as response to what the Board of Finance member was saying. And we looked, and sure enough, that, that salary line was running over on the past few years. So we took the average. And actually, it's worked out pretty well in our projection that we're running much closer to that line now with that. So we applied it again for next year versus trying to recalculate all the estimates of each position. We thought that was a simpler approach, but we put it in here in our assumptions. Next slide, please. So here are some basic recommendations.
Neil?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mark had a question.
One, one clarification on our assumptions. Are these being listed as, are these reducing our increase? Where, how are these being applied to the budget? Where where how are these being applied to the budget?
So these are factored in that they are occurring and by doing so, they get us to the current six point four one.
So they're they're already factored into the budget?
Yeah, we already factored in there and the the one um slight oversight on our part was the staff benefit reduction should have been included, um line five should have been included at the finance and audit discussion because that's already factored into our numbers, but it wasn't, so we made sure we had it for the budget book. Thank you. Um, so we're going to try some recommendations is reduce the staffing structure due to Wyndham Center closing and enrollment changes while working to avoid layoffs. And I'll say this um as many times as I can. We have some projected reductions, but as the budget goes forward, if we meet a scenario where we can avoid layoffs, it might mean some of the projections here might change because ultimately laying off people is just bad for the organization. And also, it actually isn't that great of a financial savings when you have to pay unemployment. But right now, we feel comfortable making these recommendations um that you'll see in the next slide, but I'm just going to say that as frequently as I can. Um, we are going to reduce spending that does not directly impact students. Um, I think that kind of goes without saying, but we're working really hard as a as a district to do that. And we're trying, in our budget, we're assuming we will move to the state partnership plan for the twenty five, twenty six school year. A better plan for our employees, more predictable budgeting. Um, we have a meeting with Lockton on um tomorrow. Um, and the the state rates um are typically posted the first week in March, so we're looking forward to to knowing more about that, how viable this is, um and seeing what Lockton says about their estimates as well. Um, so we'll give you more information. So I'll I'll be sharing more about this, and we also have a recommendation of um capital improvement plan estimated at um a little over one point two million, and I'll explain what's in those um shortly. So here is, oh, sorry, go ahead, Lynn.
Um, so just back to the um state partnership plan. So once we get those numbers in early March, do you expect that we'll have a finance and audit committee meeting to maybe a special meeting to talk about that or?
That is absolutely a conversation we can have. It might turn out we receive this information right before the second budget workshop. Like, like, potentially like the day of, maybe.
One way or another, we would be able to talk about it at our next budget workshop, hopefully. If not, we might have to have a special um finance and audit committee or a special budget meeting because we do need to make a decision um in what we present to the Board of Fin- in the final budget.
Yeah, not only just the impact it has financially for us, it also has impact on just executing it.
We have to work with the bargaining units and and get a get that to be able to move forward.
There's a lot of work that has to be done, yes.
Right, okay, thank you.
Welcome, Kim. Uh, so staffing by bargaining unit, pages seventy one to seventy three. Um, these are the reductions by bargaining unit. Um, with intention, we, there was a slide like this that Dr. Youngberg provided last year. When you go to the second bullet of W F T, they increased by two point four positions. This is what I was speaking to earlier. This has to do with the students receiving the specialized needs to just require certain staff. And in while we may have reduced teaching positions in places where there were vacancies, it still had a net increase of two point four. And and really, when it comes to I E Ps, I just, that's the law and we're going to follow that.
Right, so to be clear for members of the public who might view this meeting, what you said is that it's required by law, it's not negotiable. We cannot cut corners on what is required for staffing under the I E Ps.
Correct.
Yeah.
And 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 just to say it again, when it comes to some of our specialized programming, the staffing needs can be in like a lot and and it's but it's what is appropriate. Um, so these are the charts across all the the units. Um, there there's no change in crossing guards, but just to keep in mind, we have two point five crossing guards. Um, I have a feeling that will be the number, you know, like for a long time, there won't be changes there. That's why there's no reductions. But all other bargaining units had a reduction.
Yep, Neil, on the uh the special needs, the I E Ps, quite often we have special paras. But I see you've got a five point eight reduction there for the paras. Are we not expecting special ed to impact that line?
It, that's a really good question. So it just turned out with the pair reductions, while there were increases in paras due to Wyndham Center closing and the way the the staff was reallocated, we were still able to reduce five point eight from the paras or two D tutors, excuse me, or safety personnel. Um, and it still was a reduction. And there could have been a couple places too in other schools where service hours were no longer met, just the way it worked. It just how the.
So you don't anticipate an increase in par- in needs for paras with our increase in special needs students?
Uh, no, unless we get more uh special needs students that arrive on like that, we wouldn't be able to predict. But uh based on current population, no. Any other questions? Thank you for that.
On the food services, is that because of the elimination of one school?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And and we feel comfortable, just so everyone knows, because for the food services, that's a significant number um based on the size of that group. We we do not anticipate any layoffs and feel we'll be okay. Board member O'Neil shaking his head in agreement. Okay, thank you. Uh, next slide, please. So some other considerations to reduce the twenty five, twenty six budget. This is one thing that, of course, like we were just talking about what we know now. This occurred, I think, about forty eight hours after we presented the finance and audit discussion. Um, in our magnet school and vocational agricultural program tuition, we found savings of roughly, it's more than um two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and what that would do to that uh bottom red bullet there, um, it that would be able to lower our ask to five point nine five without affecting anything else. That was just savings that we discovered after the after the finance and audit discussion. And we're doing that daily and looking, always looking for something that can reduce our ask without impacting the the staffing structure. Um, we're looking for the opportunity to increase carryover of Medicaid I D A B in Title One. If that is viable, it may not be, but we're we're always looking to do that because that helps us next year. And we're strategically not filling positions that become vacant between now and June. The the one exception, actually, when people ask um is those stride and rise positions, those are an automatic approval for me because of everything we've just been saying about special needs students. Um, so uh just to keep that in mind, but we're being very strategic about that. Um, we continue to examine actual expenses compared to projected expenditures, and that has gotten us to the potentially lowering the ask to five point nine five. Um, some other considerations occurring later after this presentation. Our magnet school grant is awarded in March. We would like to hope there's going to be an increase there, but we have to wait till March to find out. Um, the insurance estimates uh that we talked about, like will be revisited in the first week of March, and we'll give you an update. This, I think, is going to be after, uh impact us after the budget, but I'm just throwing it out there. The legislative updates regarding support for special ed costs and excess costs. Um, that might be something that occurs later on, but I'm I'm just mentioning it. Um, and then the, as um many of you know, currently uh and concurrently with us, the Board of Finance is actually holding their monthly meeting. And there's a potential action where they might reduce our benefits contribution. I looked at their action items and I know that um um, the board chair of that committee has reached out to our board chair to let us know that that's on the agenda. So that could have potential impact to this year, definitely. But if if we're responsible, maybe we could apply it to somehow to next year potentially. No guarantees, but that would be nice.
Well, our our um that all could, that whole line could change if we go into the state employee plan, too.
Agreed.
Yeah. Okay. Any comments, Mark?
Yeah, Neil, when do we, when do you feel comfortable making the decision over magnet school? The the top thing there, magnet school vocational tuition savings and the budget request reduced to five point nine.
I actually feel comfortable moving forward with that right now. Um, it just, if if we found out thirty six hours or forty hours earlier, it would have been part of the finance and audit discussion. That's just money we saw that we could reduce and it doesn't impact anything else.
It's it's interesting because I, you know, obviously, coming from the auto industry, anything with the nine five. Uh, if we can get below six, I I don't want to play a lot of games with the Board of Finance. If we get it below six, that's more attractive than just over six.
It it literally, I I did think of that too when we, because we were trying to come in below six and we did it in that discussion. This just how we just, we we just stumbled upon it, basically. I don't, I want to say stumbled, but like when Rita was analyzing it, she discovered it.
So if I guarantee you four thousand on your trade in, you'll you'll buy the car today?
For you, that is correct.
Thank you.
The benefit of having a former car car salesman on the board. Now, I concur with Mark that if we can present a number that falls below six, that that psychologically makes a big difference, I think.
I I agree.
Um, so Lynn, yes. Oh, Paula's Paula has a question or comment. Go ahead, Paula.
Um, noting that there were I D A uh reductions listed. Um, how does that impact uh what we were just, what you were just speaking of? And do we have any feeling about a change in federal funding that's going to impact us? Are we just praying and going forward?
So right now, we don't have any details on it, but it's something we're just trying to monitor closely, how that could impact us down the road, whether it be this year or future years. Currently, we have no definitive, but it it's something that we are watching very closely. And it's a very good point to raise.
Paula, I think no matter what your faith or or positive way of looking at the world um might be, we can all do our best to try to hope that there's no federal impact on our schools, but it's just too tricky to know. I I did hear a press conference today up at the Capitol with the Speaker of the House and other legislators and mayors who were talking about the special education funding proposal that the governor put forward. And they were making sounds like they might like try to give the Boards of Ed something to something more firm to hang on to about increased funding for special ed before the session is over. I don't know how, as somebody who was a lobbyist for many years, I don't know how technically they're going to pull that off, but it does seem to me that they are trying very hard to indicate to the Boards of Ed a little bit more about what they might expect.
Yeah, there there's no way around it qualitatively and quantitatively over the last several years. The, it's not just the increase of need or the increase in number of students with need. It's the severity of need um and for us to meet them and what what students need to be fully supported and have a successful environment. So the the costs are just continuing to climb, and I don't see that changing. And we do need some form of support where they're just going to, that that seventy one point five will exceed seventy five percent in a couple of years. There's no way around it.
Um, Paula, are you done? And then then Katina?
Yes, thank you.
You're done? Thank you.
Paula, thank you for uh mentioning the elephant in the room, right, about fundings and state and federal. Uh, but also, there's will be a forum here if Paula's going to participate regarding special education. So all people who are watching and staff uh is coming up on the twenty seventh. And I'm committed to come and listen to what everybody has to present and is on special education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mark, your green light is on. Is something you wanted to say? Okay, um, go ahead, Neil.
All right.
You're doing a good job, Neil. This is your first time presenting the budget.
I know, so far only one cough drop needed. That's good. Um, I'm on a one cough drop presentation. Um, so uh if when we go to the um next slide, which is our capital improvements, just wanted to talk about this. It is my understanding, because as you know, I was trying to disprove the theory that it's not a good idea to run on ice, and I failed at that. So I missed our school plan and design meeting um that happened earlier uh last week. Um, but I believe all of this information is that committee, at least if not the full board, is aware of. But um these capital improvements, there's uh three hundred thousand dollars to do library media center upgrades. That includes some details there with the fifth grade section and eighth grade section, new shelving for books, new furniture in a makerspace room. Um, for facilities, a new truck with um some of the details there. This is an ongoing one per year. Uh, it it's it's a planned idea that is continuing. And then Barrows um replace the heating and cooling rooftop units as they fail over the next few years. And then install some pavers on the walkways in the back of the building. There's actually already work to do some of this in different areas, but this is just to continue it. And then at North Wyndham, um replace the existing decaying sewage pump pit, which whenever you see that, I'm like, please, let's do that now. Yes, yes. So so those are our capital improvements.
And that was reported on last week by um Brendan, has gone through the committee.
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Lynn.
Yes, Mark?
Uh, am I to assume this new truck will be also part of our learn to read program? Is that why we have a reading body? Is that going to help us with our great program?
That is a not true, but nice idea, a nice sentiment.
What is a reading body? Yeah, I I'm not familiar.
I honestly actually don't know. Uh, I'm gonna, it's the manufacturer of the body they put on the back of the truck.
It's for what?
It's the manufacturer of the body they put on the back of the truck. So it should be a capital R is what you're saying. Thank you. My apologies.
I was much more happy with reading. I want the little little kids drive around the school.
Okay, um, uh, any more questions?
Tina?
I'm just gonna say that for the listeners, if anybody's watching. I mean, our Wyndham Middle School is twenty five, twenty six years old. And North Wyndham is older than me, I think, and I'm really old. I don't know, where he was, like, uh, the seventies, probably, eighties. So I mean, like, yeah, we need a new sewage pump fit. Even when we're thinking about consolidating schools, we need to do some emergency things.
Well, also for the listeners, I mean, on capital improvement, um since we've been considering the proposed elementary school consolidation, the board has been working for a while now um with facilities, staff to prioritize projects that are absolutely necessary rather than um things that might be able to be delayed until we know for sure whether we're building a new school. Brendan, you probably want to say something about that as Chair of the Committee.
I was, I was gonna say, we, you know, we had an extensive discussion with uh Sly, the Director of Facilities. And um, you know, we're really not moving forward with anything that wouldn't make sense should these schools close in a consolidation. But that uh sewage pump pit is almost certain to fail before we would be able to open a new consolidated school. And even if, you know, it's still a benefit to the town after we leave, that that is in place and the building is still usable.
It should also be mentioned to the, to the general population that may view this, that the capital improvement monies come from a different source. It's not the same bucket of money that we use for teachers and operating costs at the schools. And some people may not understand that, but um that's why the capital improvement budgets are are approved separately from from the board budgets. And the Board of Finance deals with a lot of those capital improvement allocations. Um, once the board recommends them to them, to the Board of Finance, correct? Right.
Any more questions in capital improvements? So the next slide really just brings us to the conclusion of my presentation. And I welcome you to provide me any feedback or comments and ask any questions. And if we can't answer them right now, we will do our best for the next budget workshop. And then obviously, I think this goes without saying, but nonetheless, I will say it. Is you peruse all of this information and look at the budget book. Any questions you provide to us, we'll try to incorporate into the next presentation. And as you have this conversation, any direction or guidance you give us, we'll, when we meet with the team, we'll work on.
Paula, do you have a question?
Oh, I just, am I unmuted? I can't tell.
Yes.
Okay, I, I just actually wanted to make a statement when we were talking about the negotiations and the impact that the new contracts have. I just wanted to go back and mention that Rita was present was a major help in, in helping us navigate what turned out to be reasonable settlements. The teams were fantastic. I, I don't mean to minimize that, but without Rita's ability to keep us on track and kind of help us to project what we thought we could afford to do. That was just an immeasurable help. And, and certainly Grace, with her knowledge and her diplomatic abilities, those negotiations were, were done so well. I think both sides reached very reasonable agreements. And just a quick Grace, I'm sorry, I couldn't be there today, but you know, I'm going to miss you horribly. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Paula was the Board of Ed representative in a lot of these negotiations. And we want to thank you for your time and willingness to do that, Paula.
That was my, my pleasure and privilege.
Is there anybody else who has any comments, questions, suggestions for guidance for Neil and the team as they move forward? Mark?
I would just like to, I don't know, we need to make a motion or recommend it, but I would certainly like to see the, the book come back at the 5.95. As long as the administration feels that we're going to get the benefit of those tuition savings. I'd much rather see us present the 5.95 and discuss it at that level.
Well, let's open it up for, you want to put a motion on the floor?
If so, yeah, I would move that we reduce the budget request to 5.95 based upon savings in magnet school vocational educational program tuitions.
And with the caveat that as long as Neil and and, and projecting that, those numbers in the budget.
Just, just as an aside, I would say if you can do that with just labels, so we don't have to reprint the entire book, just, we can just, as a label sticker on sections, but.
So Marcus put a motion on the table. Do I hear a second on that motion?
I can second that, I'm DN E C.
Oh, thank you, DN E C for seconding it. So let's discuss it. Is there any further discussion of that?
Sounds like a great idea to me.
I, I would just like to add that that be the recommendation unless you could get it lower. You know, like, you know, I, I wouldn't want to, if you came up with another $150,000 savings for some reason, without making, you know, keeping in mind the things that were on those first few pages about not affecting staff, not affecting the classroom, you know?
We completely are doing that and, and go ahead, Vinnie, thank you.
I think we definitely can go with the 5.95 right now. And if anything changes within the next two weeks before our next budget workshop, we'll let you know. And the only thing I could see that may change the numbers is the Medicaid carryover. If we see the revenues coming in at a higher level than I anticipated, that might give us some savings. But that's the only thing I could project could happen in the next two weeks.
Any other, thank you, Rita. Any other comments on the motion that's on the table?
I was, I was going to tell Mark that we should use white out instead of sticky notes.
If you sell the page size labels, that you could just put a label over the page. I just don't want to see you reprint all of the basic information that we have here.
Well, they won't, they won't reprint the book until it's approved by the board. And then it becomes the board's budget, not the acting superintendent's budget. So they'll have to reprint parts of it at least, yeah.
Yeah. Where we can change less, where we, we're in agreement with you. But if we can get the budget ask lower, we certainly will be exploring that constantly.
So any other discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand and I need to see you, Paula and DN E C. Can you show me your hand? Paula, all I see is furniture in your house.
Yeah, I know. I don't know how that happened.
Just say verbally yes then. Can you say? Paula?
I'm sorry.
Are you voting yes?
I'm voting yes.
Okay. It's, it's unanimous, thank you. The other thing that, you know, may change is once we find out about what we're, what, which way we may or may not be going on the health benefits, too. That may change.
Yes.
Up or down?
Yes.
Yeah.
And even during this, like, well, like when we started, we didn't have February numbers or March numbers that could have us readjusting and thinking of different things.
Any other discussion, things we'd like to see presented in a different way or? Katina?
Only if we had more certainty from the state of Connecticut, I would appreciate that knowledge.
Unfortunately, the session doesn't end until the first Wednesday in June. So we're probably, unless they decide to pass a budget, budget in the first week of May. You know, but by the time we have to hand it off to the Board of Finance. And what could happen is the Board of Finance, based on new information from us, could decide to present a slightly different bottom line to the voters for the referendum in May. But no, I don't.
Yeah.
I wish we knew, could certainly know more.
It's that timeline that doesn't calibrate that I was talking about.
Right, right. It's always that way, though.
But in reality, it doesn't affect our expenses. It merely, so if we're going to predict a 5.95 increase, even if the state increased the ECS grant by 5 million, our increase would still be 5.9, we would just get more money from the state and less money from the taxpayers.
Right.
That just affects the mill rate. It doesn't really affect the, the living budget itself in terms of what we're spending. Other than special ed. But of course, I, I was also amused by the fact that they've lowered special ed and now they're talking about increasing special ed for us. We didn't know they lowered it already.
Correct.
Because they're getting so much flack from other towns, too. So is there anything else you all want to discuss tonight related to the budget? Well, then I'd like to thank Neil and your team for walking through the fire of putting together your first budget as acting superintendent. And also, I understand that Holly helped. We contracted with Holly to help do the budget book layout, was it?
Yes, and the fine honored tradition of once you leave the district, you have to do the budget book. If you serve under the superintendent, we kept that Janet Testa did the same thing prior. So Lauren, just so you know, when you do leave us, you'll have to do the budget book one time nearly. We're going to keep that going.
I love it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, yeah, that's right, Adam helped us, that's correct.
So I want to thank Holly Padavina in absentia for her help with this, too.
Thank you, I'll share that with her.
Definitely.
A nod to Tracy Youngberg for her leadership in getting us to the point where we actually can present budgets that are understandable. Thank you.
I agree, thank you. And I just want to give a shout out to the team because going through this, even today, the presentation, they helped make it more, like, in my opinion, more coherent and, and easier to, to present to all of you. So I just want to thank my team.
Okay, so hearing nothing else, I'm going to ask that we, for motion to adjourn at 7:55.
I move, we move.
Meeting adjourned.
Good night, all.